All the meeting to order and thank everyone for their attendance tonight. Look forward to a good meeting. We'll begin our meeting with the invocation by the Father Jim Park, who is a big part of our city and our volunteer department. If Father Park would come forward to lead the invocation. Everyone would stand please, remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Father Park, always good to have you, sir.
Thank you, will. Let us pray. Blessed are you, O God of our universe, you continue to bless us with your divine presence. That presence not only supports each of us on our journey, but also challenges us to be support to one another. As the council of this city of Virginia Beach, it is no easy for you to continue to build a community for a lifetime. But Lord, this council continues to do its best, continue to guide them through the maze of so many challenges. May they always be willing to look not only to the present, but to the future as well. May this council support its department heads, its employees, its many volunteers, and our citizens of such diverse backgrounds. Lord, may this council be patient, caring, and courageous to take the steps to build the future for this community of a lifetime. All this we ask confidently in your name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jim, thank you for coming down.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it very much. Madam Clerk, you got the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor.
Do I have a certification of the closed session? I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
We didn't have the closed session.
(laughing). That's the discussion. Okay, who made that motion?[123.03][123.03](laughing).
You made the motion for the motion.
But it was eloquently introduced.
Disregard, do I have approval for the minutes of April 7, 2015?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call for the question, please.
A vote of ten to zero with Mr. Earn abstaining. You have approved the minutes as submitted. Mr. Earn was not present for that meeting.
That's correct. Yes, please.
I'm sorry, I wasn't here either. So I need to abstain, so I need to change my vote. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Council will now move to the consenting agenda. Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval under the consent agenda first under ordinances, item H1A, which is ordinance to amend the city code, daily reports to police by pawn brokers, junk, secondhand dealers, and precious metal, gem dealers. Item 2H2, which is ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a lease with the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, rate use of land and residence at 1409 Old Beach Road in the Beach District. Item 3, ordinance to extend the date for one year to satisfy conditions in the matter of closing unimproved portions of right-of-ways at A Singleton Way, formerly Prince An Road, B South Witch Duck Road, formerly Kempsville Road, and C Prince San Road relocated. Item H4, which is ordinances to accept, appropriate, and transfer A $2,639,476 from the general fund to the risk management and general service rate workers' compensation claims, B $372,657 to the school's operating budget, $340,710 from instruction to technology classification, and $31,947 from operations and maintenance to technology classification. Item C, $60,984 in grant funds from the Virginia Department of Health, rate Lucas CPR devices and LifePak cardiac monitor upgrades. And D, $60,984 to the emergency medical services rate, local match for emergency medical equipment, $45,000 transfer within the EMS operating budget, and $15,984 from the general fund reserved for contingencies.
A hope of a public hearing for planning?
Under planning for consent, item I1, which is the application of Timothy J. Costin for a street closure in unimproved portion of Scott bin Lane at North Oceania Boulevard in the Beach District. Are there any speakers here on the Leonard M. Lyon application? No speakers on Leonard M. Lyon?
(inaudible).
Okay.
Your Honor, while you're asking the question, we did have 11 speakers in favor on Vibe, just for your information, and we do have a speaker opposed to the Vibe. If you would...
Well, we're pulling Vibe. Vibes is pulled.
Yeah.
All right. On item I2, which is the application of Leonard M. Lyon, we're going to defer that to May the 5th. Item 3, St. James Missionary Church for a modification of a conditional use permit to allow a portable classroom at 5724 Old Providence Road in Centerville District. Item 4, are there any speakers on item 4, which is Hoff Ashfield Park LLC?
No, Your Honor.
All right. Item 4, we have a letter for deferral by the applicant's attorney to Prince An, in the Prince An District, defer it to May the 19th. Item 5, GNA Properties LLC for a conditional use permit rate auto repair at 590 Baker Road in the Kempsville District. And item 7, ordinances to amend the city zoning ordinance, A, adding definitions of small wireless telecommunications facility, temporary communication tower, and amending the definition of antenna building mounted. B, building mounted antennas and small wireless telecommunications facilities. C, establishing requirements for small wireless telecommunications facilities, temporary communication towers, and building mounted antennas. And D, the Oceanfront Resort District Form Base Code allowing small wireless telecommunications facilities as permitted. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion to have a second. Second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
A vote of 11 to zero. You have approved the consent agenda as Reverend the Vice Mayor.
Council will now get under ordinances, item number 1B, establish the Vibe Creative District regarding an arts and cultural district of technologies. This was going to be on the consent agenda. Mr. Moss, you want us to pull it? I mean, you want it to be fully heard?
I want it to be fully heard and then make my comments.
Very good.
What the public has to say.
Call the speakers, please.
Billy Allman is the first speaker, and Andrew Fine is next.
We welcome you tonight. Every one of you allowed three minutes to speak.
Good evening. I'm Billy Allman, Chair of Resort Advisory Commission. About four years ago, the commission established a group of commissioners and people on planning and design review, stakeholders in this district, to come up with a plan to help revitalize 19th Street. We've worked for almost four years now to put together what we hope to be a very vibrant revitalization plan for 19th Street. And those tentacles went down to 18th Street and 17th Street, and the next thing you know, we have this incredible district and a lot of energy and things that are happening. Lived here long enough that my dad bought his first car on 17th Street from Everett Motors. It's changed down there, and we need something to help jumpstart this. I think there's a lot of energy going right now, and there's a lot of people that have surrounded this initiative, and I just ask for your support on behalf of the commission and all the people that have been a part of this district. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down tonight. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Andrew Fine, and the following speaker is Laura Haber.
We welcome you today, Mr. Fine.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it is with great pride that I speak on behalf of the Vibe, Virginia Beach's proposed art and technology district. It's been a grassroots effort to revitalize a long neglected, crime-ridden part of our city. This effort was led by people who are tourists. The Vibe's First Friday event got the public's attention and galvanized a group of young entrepreneurs who are willing to take a chance on what might be rather than what was. We now have a platform from which we can create a soul for our city, as well as a place of discovery for our citizens and visitors. The Vibe will make art pedestrian accessible to every child and adult who visit our city. This effort, over time, will raise property values and reverse the neglect in what was in another era downtown Virginia Beach. With passage of this ordinance, we can look forward to a unique collaboration with the arts and our local community. With the city's small investment, we can expect a revitalization of this urban core, which was blighted, largely vacant area with new businesses and which new businesses and cities, citizens avoided. With this investment, we will, in partnership with the city, invigorate this district, take pride in our arts, create jobs, and enhance our tax base. If our city wishes to attract well-educated, creative, innovative millennials, we must provide the kind of environment that speaks their language, and the Vibe will speak their language. Not to be overlooked, the district will also increase the profitability of adjacent restaurants, hotels, retail, and parking facilities. That is why the Hotel Association and the Restaurant Association support the Vibe. It is important to note that the neighboring civically enthusiastically supports this project. With over 500 arts districts in the U.S. today, Virginia Beach needs to get started on its own today.
Thank you, sir, for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Laura Haber and Elizabeth Hardy.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Well, we're homegrown, and this is a success story really about championing entrepreneurship and teamwork and how we get things done. So, you know, we grew organically from the Old Beach Farmers Market under a tent. A lot of us have incubated into other businesses, and we're growing, and we want to cluster in this area that's really not seen the light of too much excitement, but we're excited. And I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the city staff that's worked on this, and Councilman Earn and Councilman Davenport for your support, and Mayor Setsons for your support. Thank you to Emily LeBeauz, Bill McCauley, the Planning Department. Steve Herbert actually originally started on this with us, and now Doug Smith, we're fortunate to have his help. So we thank you for your support tonight.
Thank you for coming. Next speaker, please.
Elizabeth Hardy and Cindy Penderbacker.
We welcome you tonight.
Nice to be here. This is impromptu, but we opened, I believe the pastor opened with a prayer for council to build a community for a lifetime. And that's what we're here to discuss, is the community for a lifetime. That's based on young people that have energy and willpower and want to create businesses, support businesses that are already present, and we've got the Museum of Contemporary Art right there. I've just recently moved my business, which is a fifth-generation family business, to this new area. I'm in the northernmost territory on 22nd Street, kitty corner from Moca in Pavilion 2. And I did this because I believe in the area, and I believe in the potential, and I want to be a part of the renaissance of the area and making a difference in the community that we live in. Even though I was born and raised in Norfolk and...
We won't hold that against you.[828.32][828.32](laughing).
And I'm back here a lot more to be in Virginia Beach, and it's all about making a community for a lifetime for the next generation and enjoying where we are right now. Thanks for the...
Thank you for coming down tonight. Next speaker, please.
Cindy Penderbacker and Eric Glis.
We welcome you tonight.
Thanks for letting me be here. Can I offer everybody who's here for the Vibe tonight, can you stand, please? First of all, I'd love to say that I love Virginia Beach.
Thank y'all for standing.[865.51][865.51](laughing). I feel like a preacher right now. You may be seated. They really give you a good vibe.
That's what it's about. First of all, I'd love to say that I love Virginia Beach. We all here love our city and the oceanfront community. Virginia Beach Boulevard used to be the main hub booming with business. Over the years, it's deteriorated horribly. We have planted roots in this neighborhood in an effort to revitalize our community. Virginia Beach is one of the few large cities that has not supported an arts district until now. The district offers year-round destination for locals and tourists alike while supporting local businesses and growth. Our community support has been amazing, and we've just celebrated one year of First Friday Vibe. So what city would not want to support a positive group of artisans who wish only to prosper and grow with an awesome community for today and for the future? Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Eric Glis and Morgan Chase.
We welcome you tonight.
Thanks, sir.
Mayor Setsons, Virginia Beach City Council, thank you so much for hearing us tonight and hearing our plea for the Vibe Creative District at the beach. I myself is a Salem High School graduate that's known for pride in itself on the arts, as well as a graduate from the Old donation Center for Visual Arts and the Governor's School. The fact that there's a arts district and a creative district and anything that's promoting local businesses, I'm a big supporter of. Very happy to see, as a Virginia Beach resident and also living at the oceanfront, an area that was once not very safe to walk down at night, starting to also have character. And I'm starting to really love the character at the oceanfront with the localness, the vibe that it's creating. I mean, that's, again, the name of it. And so just very happy to see kind of a change at the oceanfront that's very refreshing and much needed.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Morgan Chase, Christina Chastain.
We welcome you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you so much. My name is Morgan Chase. I'm a Virginia Beach resident. I work in Norfolk at the local NPR station, and it's refreshing to be engaging in small government instead of covering it and said. I like to think of myself as that young, well-educated millennial that Mr. Fine so eloquently dubbed. And we're here. There's not even a Vibe District. This is the city council, and the notion of there not being one has brought us here. And I like to think of a pretty good turnout. You know, terms like blight are thrown around in urban planning, and I think you'd be hard pressed to find a better example of it than that 17th Street corridor and the notion that me, as a young professional with a wife on the way and hopefully a child, of having a place where we can ride bikes.
That wife on the way.
Yeah.[1050.23][1050.23](laughing). To be fair, I put them in the right order.
A little out of order.[1055.51][1055.51](laughing).
The notion of having a place where we can gather, you know, raise a child in a community of arts, education, learning, fun, excitement is just such an incredibly captivating idea that it's brought myself and other millennials here to petition you, and there's not even a food truck and beer outside.[1077.42][1077.42](laughing). So I hope you'll strongly consider it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming down tonight. Next speaker, please.
Christina Chastain and Charles Powell.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. My name is Christina Chastain. I've been in this position before. I am an active investor on 17th Street and the Vibe District at large, but I'm also a lover of my fine city of Virginia Beach, and I fully support the Vibe District because it will enhance Virginia Beach artistically, culturally, and diversely, which is sorely needed. Also, as the immediate past president of the Virginia Beach Restaurant Association, I would like to read their letter of support. This was written by Bill Gambrell, current president. Dear Mayor Setsons and Council, on behalf of the Virginia Beach Restaurant Association, I would like to extend our support for the creation of the Vibe Cultural Arts District proposed at the Virginia Beach Oceanfront. Our group was briefed last month concerning the proposal and voted today to support the initiative from a conceptual perspective. While our board did not review all the details, including the ordinance scheduled for this evening's public hearing, our Board of Directors is very enthusiastic with the proposal and urges its approval. The VBRA sincerely believes that the creation of such a district will assist in fostering the continued revitalization of the area and will promote vibrancy at the resort, much like what has occurred with the development of the Museum of Modern Art Center, Moca, on 23rd Street, and the Virginia Aquarium on General Booth. The VBRA agrees with our friends at the Virginia Beach Hotel Association that the creation of a cultural arts district will assist in making our city a place that folks want to live and visit. We believe that creating such a district will encourage the arts, culinary arts, in a way that will stimulate commerce and enhance the quality of life for the citizens of Virginia Beach. Sincerely, Bill Gambrell, Virginia Beach Restaurant Association. Thank you all.
Thank you very much for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Charles Powell and Steve McKenzie.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you all for having us here. I've stood here before to support the Form Base Code, and it's fascinating. In 2000, we moved into this district and brought an interior design practice into here. And to have it go from behind our building was where drug dealers and ladies of the night worked. And to see what has happened since then, and it's all grassroots. It's all those of us that do not ask for handouts, that work diligently using our own funds to raise our city up. I was also asked not to talk about myself. It's these folks. It's amazing how Laura did the farmer's market with two vendors. Do you know that when she invited the Virginia pilot to come and talk and write an article about her farmer's market, she had two vendors? The reporter came and said, "This is not a farmer's market. This is two vendors." And Laura said, "Excuse me, it's a beginning." And she and Mr. Andrew, and I'm one of those young people that he was speaking of.[1292.58][1292.58](laughing). Have inspired this to occur, please support the arts district. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Steve McKenzie and Ignor Accord. I'm sorry if I didn't pronounce you right.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you. I'm Steve McEckney. I'm with Found Objects and Details Interior Design Firm. I come here to show my support for our community, what we're trying to do. We started a little while ago, about a year ago, doing the Vibe, you know, First Friday event that has really brought together a lot of people that have shown great support for our community. What we feel, you know, why you should support Vibe is because it's about creating inspiration with art. Art is such an inspiration for all aspects of life, between business, economics, and just creating a reason, a drive for people to live, something to be proud of. And that's why we hope that you guys feel the same way, and you'll support, you know, starting our arts district in Virginia Beach.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Ignor Accord and Anita Levett.
Could you repeat them again, please?
Lenita Levett.
We welcome you tonight, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and City Council, I'm here just speaking personally. I am a transplant from New England. I've been on 19th Street for five years. My husband and I came down. We should be retired, but we're not. Our company is Loofah Art. We have been doing the Old Beach Green Market every Saturday that Laura has so beautifully put together, and I'm so proud of the energy and the community that we're feeling with the district. It feels like home. We plan to be here for the rest of our lives. And what's interesting is when we do craft shows all over Hampton Roads, people have heard about us. I'm proud to say that this is my community. We're not strangers to the rest of Hampton Roads. They know the energy that's in our community, and I'd like to see this expand and continue with the Vibe. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Steve Johnston.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you for your time. I don't know who's doing the city, the urban planning for the city of Virginia Beach, but that person needs to be fired. I'm not opposed to the Vibe District. I'm opposed to the location of the Vibe District. We're about to invest in a major arena and put another jewel in the crown of Virginia Beach. We don't need an art district adjacent to it or between the arena and the oceanfront. We need to put in there is restaurants, retail, and entertainment venues to support the arena. Before and after an event at the arena, people should be given the choice to either sit in the traffic jams that we don't, because we don't have enough parking, or get there early and stay a little later, walk to a restaurant or a bar, spend some more of your money at the oceanfront, stay there for a little bit. Nearby restaurants, of course. Tax revenues would be greatly increased from the restaurants rather than galleries near the arena. We should have an arena district, not an art district down at the beach. A few weeks ago at the Sea Tech Civic League meeting, Ben Davenport said, "The Virginia Beach is the largest city in America without an art district. We also don't have an arena. We also don't have light rail." But what we do have are great schools, low crime, great neighborhoods, and people who love this city so much that we volunteer tens of thousands of hours to serve our city. At town hall meeting last week, one of the assistant city managers said, "Light rail is about changing Virginia Beach from a small town into a major city." I, and many people in Virginia Beach, do not want to live in a major city. We want to live in Virginia Beach. We want great schools. We want safe neighborhoods. We want Virginia Beach and everything that it has to offer and little of what it does not have to offer. Mr. Mayor, you tell everybody, Virginia Beach is the greatest city in the world. So why do we want to change that? I encourage you all to vote against this and other major changes. Let Virginia Beach be Virginia Beach, the great city that we all know and love. Otherwise, there's a old warning, be careful what you wish for because you just might get it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
All the speakers, Your Honor.
Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Vibe District.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Moss.
Yes. I ask the time to be pulled. I'm in favor. I think we do need change, and I think we do need the district. What concerns me, and I've mentioned it at the retreat, is I think we need these kind of tax incentives for every single neighborhood, every single parcel, every single zoning category in the city. We have a lot of places in the city and every district of our community. You can go around and say a place that needs revitalization. What concerns me about this ordinance is not, because the gentleman talked about all the things that they were doing with their own equity and their own sweat, I think that's great, and I think they should be applauded for that because that is what's made America great. But what concerns me in here is that now within this district, there's going to be all sorts of financial incentives. Remember, we just told senior citizens we couldn't afford $3.3 million of tax relief that they were getting because we were so financially stressed. We tell our teachers, we tell our firemen, all the things we can't do because our economy's growing low, we don't have the cash, and now we have all these tax incentives, which I think if we were doing them citywide would be great. But to only do them for one geographical area gives that area a competitive advantage at the expense of everybody throughout the city. And I think that's the aspect that's fundamentally flawed. I know you all didn't speak to that specifically, but you can have your district, but why should a homeowner who does their home and increase its value not get a 10-year property tax rebate? Why wouldn't the gentleman with the restaurant in Centerville who invests a lot in his restaurant that gets people who visit Regent University be able to get a rebate on his BPOL taxes? I think this is all about growing the community, is the whole city. And my objection is the only providing these economic incentives to the select few. Well, how did, how did they get to be the chosen? Why isn't everyone in Virginia Beach chosen? Why aren't we all equally should be availed the same opportunity to invest and put our sweat equity and have the city as a whole be a partner in it? So I'm in favor of the district, but we're not going to divide the question, I know that, but I cannot support a redistribution policy that provides a subsidy and an economic advantage to the few at the expense of the many, and that's why I'm voting no.
Thank you very much. I will call for the question in just a second, but I really want to thank, you know, the group that came forward tonight. I remember this thing started a number of years ago, and to sit back there now and see what has happened with that farmer's market, to see the new building that's already been constructed, the gentleman just spoke, and the ones that are under construction, and that is revenue, and that's going to be to the benefit of the city in the long term. But you know what? When Billy Allman came up here and started talking about Everett Jordan, I started thinking about 17th Street, and you're all going to have to listen to him for one second. I remember it was Emery Ford, which became Malvin Motors, you know, Everett Jordan, Brook Shorter, Clark Chevrolet, and Alphen Motors, and then Malvin Motors was at 17th and Burnet. But think about what that street used to be. I mean, think about, those were successful car dealerships, and it was booming. And to see this getting revitalized and moving forward again, I could not be more excited. Mr. Earn.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to belabor it, but I think it's important to note that, you know, the master plan of which the resort was the first one that we... you know, the master plan of which the resort was the first one that we actually entertained. You know, we talked a great deal in that document about, you know, what was going to happen to what is really the core of the resort. And the master's plan really spoke to the scale of what was going to be there, but it was a midterm action item from that plan that said, "Well, how are we going to actually encourage the revitalization of this area and what we were going to do?" And so, there's been a group of folks that have worked really hard over a number of years to come up with a plan to do that. You know, certainly when we talk about the ability to revitalize neighborhoods, having, you know, vacant storefronts or underutilized storefronts in an area so close to the resort has not been positive. And to come up with a plan that can actually change the face of that, I see is a very good thing. You know, this wasn't done in a vacuum. I mean, the ordinance we have in front of us is one that has been cultivated after reviewing many other cities that have successfully done this and come up with these types of incentive packages to create that critical mass, to make a legitimate art district. What is really wonderful about what it is that we have before us here today is that not only is it the public entity that is a partner in here, but we actually have private partners that have come up and have pledged not just their time and their effort, but their actual cash to come up and actually jumpstart this. So, I couldn't be more excited to have the opportunity to review this today and look forward to my positive vote.
I call for a question. Oh, that's for Rosemary.
As we all know, we don't have a redevelopment house authority, which I'm not saying we should have one, but when you don't have these things, you have to use different types of incentives when you have an area that is less desirable than some of the others. And so, I think it's absolutely fantastic that this community has come together to revitalize a really special part of our city. And there's some historic buildings there, too. And some of these buildings are going to have adaptive reuse, which the Historical Preservation Commission is very excited about. And so, we have lost some buildings on Seventeenth Street that really make me sad, like Pepper's John and the Roland Court Theater. And then there was the Farmer's Bank Building, I think, that got torn down. So, hopefully with this, we'll be able to save the historic buildings that need to be saved. And I think Ms. Chastain is working on one right now. So, anyway, I'm very happy to speak.
Thank you, Rosemary Bobby.
Oh, thank you. And I guess what I'm looking at is future long-term sustainability as we're going forward. You know, we have some ambitious plans for that area, you know, as the aforementioned arena. It's not only the arena per se, it's the development that, using the template of the developer assuming the risk, will bring a lot of energy, synergy and energy to that area in terms of businesses, restaurants, a destination, not only for, you know, the out-of-towners, but the people that live in Centerville, Kempsville, Bayside, a destination that they can go to. And the point is, I see that an arts district, you know, in collaboration and in proximity to this whole area, because if we're looking at potential dome site development and, you know, some other initiatives that will take off on their own by planting the seed money. And right now, we have a special committee of citizens looking at small business, identifying the barriers to small business startup and expansion. And certainly some of the things are enterprise zones that we may be looking at, you know, and some other depressed areas in the city. But I think we have to be creative to jumpstart it, to facilitate what we're trying to do here. But once again, I think in the long term, you know, getting people that live in Virginia Beach out to Virginia Beach, spending their money in Virginia Beach, is going to be a long-term gain to all of us as we go forward.
Amelia, then I'll call for the question, please.
Well, as a music professor, as you know, I support the arts. This is very important, and I like that they have a transparency with our Commission of Arts and Humanities. Another thing that I liked about this is you all took the time to put your own money in first before coming to us instead of the other way around. We have many small women, if you notice, the women are out here, and minority-owned businesses, and women are called minorities, I don't know why, but the bottom line is that creative part of us need to flourish. And I think this is an important and major step, is very diverse, and I really support what's going on.
And then I really am going to call for a question.
I feel like everyone else is saying something, so I should say something as well.
Absolutely. Get right in the air.[1258.01][1258.01](laughter)
As an entrepreneur, I feel I am compelled to say thank you to you business owners who are opening your businesses, putting your blood, sweat, tears, your equity, everything into starting something and creating jobs. That's exactly what you're doing. Without you as entrepreneurs, we don't have jobs. We can't grow our job base in the city. So, you are important to that, and you are what is fueling the job creation. And for that reason, and that reason alone, I will simply vote for this tonight and give it my support. So, thank you.
Okay. I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of 10 to 1, you have approved the establishment of the Vibe District.
We're now going to go to item number six in planning. Item number six in planning, Eat the Street 757, Mike Standing Festival LLC, special exception for alternative compliance to 2.2 of the Oceanfront Resort District Form Base Code, and B-conditional Use Permit Regarding Open Air Market and Outdoor Recreation at 712 Atlantic Avenue. Please call the speakers.
John Malvin.
We welcome you tonight.
Just wanted to say we put our blood, sweat, and tears in this and came a long way, and as the Vibe District does, and as we put our own money and sweat in this, and then I just want to say that we want to push forward and show Virginia Beach that we can be like they are out West, that, you know, we can bring food trucks together, music, artisans, and all, you know, create a great, unique experience other than the touristy things that, you know, are going on right now. And I just want to say thank you and appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming tonight. Next speaker.
Cassandra Azalea Agalia.
Good try.[1388.58][1388.58](laughter)
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you. Thank you all for having us. It's been a road, one that I'm not familiar with, but I have been so blessed by so many people at the city leading us and so many committees leading us in the direction of getting to where we are today. Four years ago, I started a food truck with my sister, and it was, it was rough. There were no food trucks in Virginia Beach, and we kind of had to work with the city to kind of plan that road. Four years later, we're at a point where we would love to do what we're doing in all the other cities. We want to have one central location where it's a green, open space, open air market with artists, artisans. You'll see right here at the festival center in Virginia Beach, right at the oceanfront. We would be inside the gates. We draw 1,500 to 2,000 people at the meetups that we do in the other locations. We want a central location that our friends, fans, family can come to on a regular basis, not just for a three- or four-hour period. There's probably close to 100 food trucks in Hampton Roads. There's probably 300, if we really wanted to dive into it, that run wonderful, wonderful food trucks. They're artists in their own ways, they're chefs, they're mobile chefs. They work with their families, they work with their, with their friends, they work with employees. But that's exactly what we want to do. We want to bring this to the beach. It's an area that's populated right now with a lot of buildings, and this would offer a open-air space. It's right here, you'll see, there'll be a beer garden on the exterior, there'll be gazebos located, there will be, as you can see, the round seating. There'll also be artists such as musicians, both from the high schools, bands, musicians, featuring from folklore to acoustic, you name it. We're hoping to bring everybody together. We've got great support, great food trucks. We work with Whole Foods, Centerra, MOKA, all of these. Department of Recreation this year in Virginia Beach. All of these trucks would have to be in and out. It would be different trucks every day. Some days it would be partially, partial days, because there are also many who want the opportunity to bring this to the beach. And we draw, as you could see from those pictures, all ages. We're drawing children and families and the soccer teams and the moms and everybody. So, we would love, love, love to have this right here at Virginia Beach where we're from. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down tonight. Thank you. Next speaker.
Mike Standing.
We welcome you tonight.
Excuse me for being late. I'm out of breath from running. I apologize. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, my name is Mike Standing. Ooh, I'm out of shape.[1573.01][1573.01](laughter) I'm the property owner of the proposed site for the food truck park. As you know, food truck parks are very big success all over the country. It's a gathering place for residents and our tourists. It's a little different from the typical fair down there, the same t-shirt shops and restaurants and hotels and so forth. This pilot program will enable all of us to learn a lot more about food trucks. Food trucks, there's been a little contention here lately, the RAC, the Restaurant Association, basically the issue that I understand is that they want an ordinance. Well, what better way to figure out how to do an ordinance than this pilot program? The, I don't know if she spoke about it, but the folks here are willing to go through the full RAC. I had a meeting with Mr. Allman, and there's been, RAC didn't get a chance to vote on it, but willing to go through RAC. It's the first week in May. They're looking for a vote, for a positive vote today so that they can get started. If they don't follow what RAC wants, then it really messes up their chance next year to be able to get this as a permanent place. So, I think that they're willing, they're able, they're anxious, they're young, vivacious, and I think you can tell this is a fantastic project. There's a retail space there. I've been offered $50,000 to lease it. I'm not leasing it. I want to do this. I'm doing it. I have two, three, three properties, four properties down there, and I'm doing it because I think it'll enhance the area. I wouldn't be doing this. I have more to lose than anybody to put restaurants or food trucks up under my restaurants. And I think it'll enhance the area, the businesses, and the residents down there. That's about it. I respectfully request that you all permit them to do this.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
I call the speaker, Your Honor.
Mr. Davenport, you're the one that asked this be brought forward.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve Eat the Street 757 with the following change, that the operation will be between 8:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m.
Okay. Is this for one year?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Do I have a second? Second. Got seconds? Any discussion? Just that I'll be abstaining because Town Bank's involved with it.
I'll be abstaining, too, Your Honor.
I'll call for the question.
Who else was abstaining?
I am.
Mr. Hearn, will I get your letter, please?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Can you change your vote, Mayor?
Thank you.[1727.36][1727.36](laughter) I've never had that happen before.
With two abstentions, the vote is 9 to 0.
Thank you very much.[1736.01][1736.01](applause) There are no appointments today. Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? Will adjourn. Thank you all very much.
Well, I'm not sure we were thinking.[1747.63][1747.63](music)